Okay, can everyone take their seats, please? We're going to begin the meeting.
There's time on here now.
Thank you. All right, may everyone please silence your phones so that you do not disturb the meeting. I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the 34th City Council for February 22nd, 2022, at 7:30 PM. Clerk, would you please pause the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Hamud.
Present.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember El-Sawafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Councilman El-Sawafi.
Thank you, Council President Serini. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Reverend Mark Phillips from Cherry Hill Presbyterian Church, who will give the invocation at tonight's meeting. Everyone who is able, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Oh God of many names, accept our thanks for this day and its blessings. We're thankful for this day you've given us for its opportunities and challenges. Tonight we pray that unity might prevail in this place. Help us to be instruments of peace. Help those who lead us come together to resolve issues that affect us all. Help us cooperate well and may each person here bring their experience and their expertise and work solutions together. Help us to listen well and to empathize and to brainstorm for the best for our city. Defend us from anything that would crush hope. May confident expectation that good things are on the horizon rise up in our hearts. For all that has been, for all that will be, we offer our thanks. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. Appreciate that. Mr. Clerk, can we have the next item?
Item four, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Hamud approving the minutes of the previous special closed meeting of January 20th, 2022, the previous special meeting of February 3rd, 2022, and the previous regular meeting of January 25th, 2022.
Offer.
Okay, are there any, I'm sorry. Yeah. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to the minutes? Okay, if not, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item five, ordinance number 21-1740, introduced by Councilmember Herrick, synopsis and ordinance to amend the Elections Chapter, Chapter 8, Article 2 of the Dearborn Code of Ordinances entitled Precincts, resolution by Councilmembers Paris and Abraham to take from the table, I'm sorry, to table the ordinance.
Okay, the election division along with the city clerk has proposed a precinct redistricting and consolidation plan that will take effect before August 2022, a statewide primary election proposed at that time. The redistricting will reduce costs administrative and administrating elections and the precinct consolidation and realignment and reducing a number of voting locations for each election day. The proposed redistricting, redistricting plan will save approximately $30,000 per year, and the precinct realignment is proposed for some exit, I'm sorry, for some existing, will eliminate some existing polling locations. This removal of several locations are included such as Oakman School, St. Alphonsus, the Dearborn Public Schools Administrative Building, which is Tanic, and also Whitmer Bowles School will be eliminated, NOL Smith, as well as Gear Park, Henry Ford Elementary as well. So several schools have been eliminated. And the proposed new locations are going to be, McCullough-Unis, Fortson High School, the Ford Performing Arts Center, and additional two other precincts will be added to Etzel Ford. The Michigan Independent Redistricting Commission passed the final House and Senate and Congressional districts, and these redistricting maps will go into effect for April statewide primary. And the state of Michigan has imposed a deadline of April 4th, 2022 upon municipalities and clerks who wish to redistrict the voting precincts within their jurisdiction so they may utilize the 2022 statewide primary. So this is the first of two readings. Are there any questions or concerns on this item? Okay. Councilman Hamud?
So, as I stated, that at the Committee of the Whole, I believe that we're going through this process entirely too quickly. Unfortunately, last week, there was inclement weather, which definitely, I think, reduced the amount of people that were able to attend the meeting when we covered this agenda item as well. So, redistricting happened at the state level for the last year, and there was a lot of public input, and I actually really appreciated that as somebody who is very passionate about voting and about democracy. Earlier today, we received an email from Clerk Durany telling us why seeking public input on redrawing our precincts is not needed, and essentially a, quote, "waste of time." So, the process, and I'm just going to quote from the email exactly, "The process and most will, most will not understand all the complexities involved and worked on by the clerk's office." And, you know, there's a reason why we ask for public input. It's very critical that residents, first of all, feel that they have a stake in the government of their city, and more importantly, you know, we currently vote inside of neighborhoods, and we need to ensure that there is accessibility, and we need to make sure that people have the ability to get to their polling locations, they need to know where they are. We, and to the point of other things, we have not reprecincted, we'll call it that, and so redistricted the city in over 20 years, and it's going to be a lot of work to make sure that we get this right, and we're kind of jumping into this, in my personal opinion, without getting appropriate input from the public. The quote earlier today from the clerk was, "Having a public meeting will just drag out the process, and most will not understand all the complexities involved and worked on by the clerk's office. Naturally, residents tend to look at what affects them personally and not the big picture," which, again, is the responsibility of the council and board. Now, personally, I do believe that there are situations when the city council will be called upon to make decisions on the part of the city. That is our job. However, I do personally believe that there are situations when we need to take public input into account. And yes, the decisions that we will make during the next four years will not always be popular, and yes, we're going to have to vote on things based on the information that is given to us. But in this specific case, one of the very few direct interactions that residents have with their government and with their municipality, I believe there needs to be a lot more public input. I think that we're rushing into this entirely too fast, and I believe that we need to have public forums where people can actually discuss these maps, which were presented to us less than one month ago. And I think that people, we need to take into account things like income level, transportation, the availability of translated ballots. There's a whole wide variety of issues that I'm not going to, you know, go over in this forum because we have a lot of other business to get to today, but that's why I'm going to motion to table the ordinance, and, you know, until we have more time to study this, and if that means that we can't get, you know, into the general election later this year, because, don't forget, everybody, we have four elections this year, and I think it's going to be a little bit confusing that we're changing polling locations for the first time in 20 years with only a couple months' worth of outreach that we're going to be able to do. And by the way, just looking at the numbers, we're going to, we are going to have voting precincts that are 50% more registered voters than we've ever had in the history of the city in one building. And we've already seen what the elections have looked like in Dearborn over the past 20 years. It's very rare that you end up with, let's call it, a smooth election in the city of Dearborn, and we need to put effort, and we need a comprehensive plan from the clerk and from the city on how we're going to make sure that these elections are run smoothly. So, to that point, I'd like to motion to.
Over here, over here. Councilman, on the side.
Sorry.
Okay, that's a motion to table. I'd like to make a comment by Councilman Hamud. I do, we did receive some information today, and as you alluded to, and we did have some conversations earlier on with the clerk, but I want to make sure that the residents understand, too, that this, as far as procedural aspect, this body did receive this as a, as a regular, regular agenda item, and we quickly asked that it be taken off, and we did have a study session. So to be fair, we did have a study session where we did get maps, and we did have an opportunity to ask a lot of questions, which, on the point of Councilman Hamud, it did open up other questions as well, and we are concerned of our, some of the areas in East Dearborn where we have a very high turnout, it being completely eliminated, and might be for good cause, but I am, want to make sure that the residents know that this council body did move this item directly to a study session, took it off the agenda. We did have a study session in a very timely and swift manner so that we can get the information that we are, that we do have today. So, Council, Councilwoman Burns would like to speak.
Thank you, Council President. As my colleagues have alluded to, this is a really critical item, and I think it's very important that we seek feedback from the community in the community. I would like to see a town hall or community forum in at least one of our neighborhood schools, in one of the neighborhood schools that serves as a polling location, because we know that those are walkable and more accessible to folks. So that's something that I'm absolutely proposing and am pushing for, and I think that's critical that we take that step. As Council President Serini mentioned, we have held a study session with the clerk's office where some additional information was shared, and I think even more questions arose, and it's the job of this body to ensure that every member of our community who is eligible and wishes to vote has the opportunity to do so in a way that is accessible and equitable, especially for members of our community who may not have access to transportation. We all know that Dearborn was not designed originally, at least, with walkability in mind. That's something that we're working on, but we're not there yet. So it's really critical that we take that into consideration, and I look forward to continuing to work with my colleagues as we get more information and feedback from the community, right? We can't make a decision without data. We don't have community input yet. We don't know from people who live in the neighborhoods that are most directly impacted how this affects them, whether they think these changes are appropriate, or whether they really would lead to some serious barriers for folks. We need that information, and we need to know that, we need to hear that from our residents, from our voters. And so I think that's really important, and I look forward to having those conversations with folks and moving forward in a way that is appropriate and empowering for our community now and into the future as well.
Thank you, Council. Any of, any of my colleagues, Councilman Abraham?
Just procedurally, just so we're clear, and I appreciate the comments from the Council President because it's spot on, we did have a study session, and I don't believe anybody from the public chose to attend.
Right.
I think it was just, it was an open meeting, obviously, but it didn't draw a lot of attention. I support, as I said on Thursday at the Committee of the Whole, the idea of scheduling a town hall of some sort, a public meeting, to review this. I see no harm in doing that. However, what's on the table for us tonight is a first reading procedurally, and we have plenty of time before the second and final reading to accomplish all the goals that have been outlined by this body. I, for one, am prepared as supporting this item to let us have first reading, and what we're actually doing then is tabling the ordinance, so I don't know procedure, if you could table something that's on the agenda to table after first reading for a final reading.
We take it from the table, yeah.
Well, I'm not prepared. I just make the comment to Councilman Hamud, and I respect your comments, and I agree with almost all of them, but I do believe if we have the goal and the objective to complete this by the timetable that was outlined by the state of Michigan and our city clerk, then I just see no harm in having first reading so that we have a clock that's ticking. If this body decides they want to try and meet the April deadline, great, and if we decide we don't want to meet that April deadline, then we just don't have final reading. That's my comments. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Any of my colleagues, anything else? Councilman El-Sawafi?
Thank you, Council President. You know, voting is the language of our democracy, and we want to make sure we get this process right. We don't want to rush into anything, and I just want to feel like we took all the critical factors into consideration, and I don't have that feeling right now. So I think I would support table in this for now, getting that public input, making sure we take into consideration all those critical factors of transportation and how folks are getting to those voting locations, and then we can move from there.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Clerk, that was an offer made by Councilman Hamud and a support by Councilman El-Sawafi for tabling the motion.
Removing from the table.
Right. Removing from the table, but Mr. Romer, for procedural aspect, that would be to table it, yeah.
To table before first reading.
Before first reading, so that would require us to have a vote on that, on this exact motion, right?
Yes, you'll need a majority after the offer and support to table the matter.
Okay. Well, before we get to that, since we have an offer and support, is there any other of my colleagues who'd like to speak on this item? Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you.
I don't think it's debatable. Now that you've accepted the offer and support, the discussion is closed.
I'll, I can withdraw my motion until we have, if we want to have a discussion about it.
Yeah, Mr. Romer?
If we're going to table it, I don't know the value of having a discussion. I mean, if we're going to move forward for it, in my opinion, we should have a discussion. If we're not moving forward, I don't know what.
Well, procedurally, yeah, procedurally, we had a gentleman, one of our councilmen, make an offer to support during his comment, why we had Councilwoman Herrick waiting for her comment, so I wanted to be fair to that. So, Mr. Romer, procedurally, how should we proceed on this aspect?
Well, since you have an offer and support, you should proceed on the vote on the motion.
Okay. Okay. Okay, then, I'm assuming we would have a unanimous roll unless you'd like to have a roll call.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, okay. Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
No.
Councilmember Paris?
No.
Councilmember El-Sawafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Council, Council President Serini?
Yes.
Okay, we have four yays, three nos. Motion passes.
I think as a point of order, I mean, we can, if, we can take comments in your business, right?
Yeah, I'm sure, we can comment at the end as well, so I'd like to continue the meeting as forward as possible. So that item has been tabled, and next item, clerk, please.
Item number six, resolution by Councilmembers Abraham and Herrick renewing the contract with Environmental Systems Research, Inc., in the amount of $165,000 for three years of annual maintenance for geographic information system software.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached, taken from the table. The Technology and Innovation Department is requesting to renew this maintenance contract with Arc GIS software, which has been used by the city since 2010. The Arc GIS service, I'm sorry, offers, I'm sorry, offers unique capabilities and flexible licensing for application on location-based analytics to business practices and to gain insights on textual tools to visualize and analyze data in collaboration with sharing various maps and apps, dashboards, and reports. The contract is for $165,000 for three years. Is there any questions from my colleagues?
I have a comment. Just procedurally, procedurally, we don't have to take this from the table. It's a resolution, it's already on the table, so just as a matter of procedure.
This, this item right here, it says, okay, it says on my agenda.
Well, it's a resolution, so it doesn't need to be taken from the table.
Unanimous, is that correct?
Councilman Abraham's correct.
Okay, so we'll remove that. Ms. Hashman, do you have that in the notes? Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Any other question, any other comments from my colleagues pertaining to this item? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, Herrick, no objections, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item seven, resolution by Councilmembers Hamud and El-Sawafi authorizing a sole source purchase from Azteca Systems, Inc., in the amount of $178,500 for three years of annual maintenance on City Works software.
Okay. Does this also require a unanimous roll to be attached from the table, taken from the table?
No.
Okay, so that.
All the resolutions are.
So can we have that corrected again? Thanks, I'm going to check. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, City Works MIS Asset Management System is a software platform that allows for tracking of operation and maintenance of various work orders, service requests, and inspection. The software provides analytics through custom reports and integrates with the city's GIS system and for the city's infrastructure and facilities. Currently, the software is fully utilized by the Water and Sewer Division, but not only that office, it is also going to be integrated into other parts of the city as well. This software is, the software's award, software award contract is $57,500 for the first year with 3% increases for the following two years. Is there any questions or concerns on this item from my colleagues? Okay, any questions from the public? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item eight, resolution by Councilmembers El-Sawafi and Hamud authorizing the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding between the city and Next Energy's Center for participation in Michigan Next Cities program with a three-year initiative and requesting immediate effect.
Yeah, this is a very exciting item here. The purpose of this agreement is to find, is to define the roles and responsibilities between the parties in collaborating and executing project tax, tasks for implementation, excuse me there, of MI Next Cities program. The agreement is to improve energy efficiency, stability, and reliability of programs within the city and also the overall living of our residents. Currently, the city of Dearborn was selected, along with Flint and Marquette are the only three cities for this program. The goals of the agreement are to be, to identify and deploy tailored smart city solutions, ensure benefits are equally distributed among residents, and to provide a roadmap for implementation of similar solutions across the state of Michigan. It is being requested that the mayor is to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city of Dearborn and Next Energy Center to allow the city to participate in the MI Next Cities program. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this? Mayor, I do want to thank you for this. I know that you had a lot to do with this. You had mentioned this to us in our briefing meetings before you actually took your official duties, and I know this is something that is really going to help our, our city be the leader, and I know that had a lot to do with your time in the State House, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the public? Councilman El-Sawafi, I'm sorry.
No, I'm very excited for this. You know, I did some desktop research on, on this organization and what they could bring to, to our city, and I'm excited that we got selected, and, you know, I feel like they can really help us move towards a smarter and a cleaner and greener city, so just very excited about that. I know I had some concerns during the COW as far as the agreement and our responsibilities in it, but I was assured by Corp. Counsel that there would be, there would be no issues with that, so, thank you.
All right, any comments from the public?
Oh, wait.
Well, Councilman, I'm sorry. Councilman Hamud?
So, as someone who's worked in transportation for my entire professional career, I'm extremely excited about this program, especially because I work in electrification, and MI Next Cities is kind of going to take a more integrated approach to things like fleet electrification, land use, shared mobility. I mean, these are all things that, you know, we talk about as engineers about the future at work, and I'm just so happy that we're going to have the opportunity as a government locally here in Dearborn to be able to kind of really work to actually implement those solutions, you know, and I think it's, we're going to be, if this is executed properly, which I'm confident that we have the people on board to kind of get that done, I think we're, we're going to see in the next decade, you know, a whole new transportation infrastructure, or at least a plan for a, for new transportation infrastructure. We're going to have to figure out how to fund some of these solutions, hopefully, when we, when we get there, so, but I am extremely excited that we're going to get the, the expertise behind it to kind of figure out how we can better operate as a, as the commercial and educational and community hub that I believe that Dearborn is in Wayne County in Southeast Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. If I could, I know during the Committee of the Whole, we did have a series of questions about this, and I know the public is probably scratching their head a little bit, what is this all about? Because it seems like it's a big deal, and we're really not talking about it that much. If I could, I did bring up, from my own understanding, too, how did we come to the point where we're at today? I mean, why is it that Dearborn, Flint, and Marquette are going to have a memorandum of understanding, or at least we are at this particular time now, after those three, the three of us? And I just wondering if the mayor or Corporation Council could possibly address some of those issues? How did we get to where we're at today? Were we selected? Did we put in an application process? I know some of the answers were delved into during the Committee of the Whole, but I think the public really wants to hear a little bit more what this is all about, and is this going to cost anything? Budget's consciousness right now, what we're going through, budget season is upon us, how is this going to cost the city of Dearborn? And it says specifically in here, three-year initiative where the first-year parties support community engagement and design some items or aspects to this. Community engagement is key, and I think the first step right now, this is coming before us, that maybe just offer a little bit more of an explanation so the people in the public and at home could possibly understand this. Thank you.
Of course. May I, Council President?
Of course, yes, may.
So, the program, they pronounce it as MI Next Cities. Whenever you see MI, they typically just say MI Next Cities. I started these conversations prior to assuming office through the contacts I had serving in the state legislature. The reason that three cities around the 100,000 population level or less were selected was because they wanted to prove that you can work with smaller, medium cities and create a blueprint for how you can become a smarter city, and address some of the fundamental environmental justice issues. So that's why Dearborn was uniquely positioned, just given that we're the hometown of Henry Ford. You know, I've worked on many relationships within the, within the Eagle Department over in Lansing, and then additionally, from a funding perspective, the funding for this program has already been fully allotted for within the state budget, and so the full three years has already been allocated to the MI Next Cities program in previous state budgets, and so from the city's perspective, we will not be footing any actual dollars. Our contribution, our participation is in staff time, and so working with our planners, with our public health individuals, with our economic development folk, with our environmental justice individuals, all within the city, to hopefully begin to address on how we can pave a pathway to becoming a smarter city. And when we say smarter city, it's not just about the attractive features of autonomous vehicle lanes or, you know, things of that nature, although that's very attractive. In my conversation with MI Next Cities, and it's actually many stakeholder groups who are at the table as well, they have their consulting arms, they have some of the large corporations from across the state who are also at the table. My goal is to address fundamental issues impacting equity and environmental justice in order to put us on a pathway to getting towards autonomous vehicle lanes and things of that nature. Although that's the great, you know, whipped cream and cherry on top, we have to address, address some of the fundamentals, and so we'll be working with them to identify those fundamentals. Our community relations department will be pulled in to hosting community conversations about these issues as this, as we progress along this way, but we're super excited that we were selected, super excited that the resources will be provided to us from the state, and that we're basically just be sharing our ideas, identifying the problems, and really tailoring it to our needs. And the goal is if they have success amongst these three cities, that you've then created the pathway for cities all across the state of Michigan to begin their process in becoming smarter cities. So, super excited about this. You don't come across these opportunities often, but this is what I alluded to very early on in the conversation regarding organizational structure, about how we have to have strategic ideas and visions and plans for what does Dearborn look like one, three, five years down the line. And this was a specific project that I alluded to now that MOU is finally before us, so just, you know, happy to be here at this point.
Do you foresee, then, Mayor, that this would have any kind of a great possibility of economic impact on the city by drawing other development within the city?
I wholeheartedly do, and I thank you for that question. You know, the, the reality is it'll come down to how well we execute and what we address. And so I think you do a few things. One, if you execute well, you can probably give, you know, you become home to maybe companies that have synergies with Ford Border Company. Secondly, from a brand and reputation standpoint, I think you put Dearborn on the map as a city that's moving towards becoming a smarter city, and hopefully becomes attractive not only to future entrepreneurs and business owners, but also future families and homeowners that want to move to a city that's thinking, that's technologically progressive, if you want to put it that way.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. Appreciate that. Any comments from the public? Okay. Unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item number nine, resolution by Councilmembers Hamud and El-Sawafi, concurring in the appointment of Zainah El-Hassan to the Civil Service Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2023, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you. Zainah El-Hassan is, received her doctorate from the University of Michigan, University of Detroit Mercy Law School. She also was selected and completed the Harvard Business School for Young American Leaders Program, and Ms. El-Hassan is the longest-serving Corporation Counsel for Wayne County, serving through Ficano and our current Wayne County Executive, Warren Evans. She currently sits as General Counsel and Board Secretary for the Kresge Foundation, which was founded in 1924, and today their work expands opportunities through American cities through grant-making and social investments in the arts, education, environment, health, and human services, to just name a few. Ms. El-Hassan's appointment will be for a term ending of June 30th, 2023. We'd like to thank her, I really appreciate, I know her very well, I am very glad that she did accept this duty because I know that she has many things on her plate and was unable to attend tonight's meeting. Do we have any questions or concerns from my colleagues?
I would just say.
Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, so I've known Ms. El-Hassan for a very, very long time as well, and I'm, Yeah, so I've known Ms. El-Hassan for a very, very long time as well, and I'm, as I stated during the COW, and I'll say to everyone else, I think we're very blessed as a city to have someone who is coming down from a multi-billion dollar foundation where she serves as General Counsel, and she's very, very experienced, and I'm very happy that we're going to have someone onboard who really understands the complexities of, you know, especially public litigation. It's just different, and I know she's a very, very ethical woman who really wants what's best for our community, and I'm so happy that the mayoral administration was able to convince her to come onboard, so, thank you.
All right, any comments from the public? Okay, any objections for unanimous roll? Unanimous roll will be attached, next item, please.
Under New Business, item 10, resolution by Councilmember Herrick, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Rick Coward.
Rick Coward was born on October 27, 1951, and peacefully passed away on January 29, 2022, at the age of 70. He is survived by his loving wife, Andy, daughters Erin and Emily, and his beautiful grandsons, Lennon and Harrison. Rick graduated from his beloved Central Michigan University to earn a Masters of Music from the acclaimed University of Michigan. In a teaching and conducting career that spanned more than 45 years, Rick touched the lives of many. His students at Trenton High School and Henry Ford College went on to become professional musicians, members of top university marching bands, and music teachers. Rick said the best part of his job was seeing his former students enjoy success doing what they love most, playing, conducting, and teaching music. His passion for music led him to form the award-winning Henry Ford Big Band, which achieved international acclaim by performing at major jazz festivals around the world. The band enjoyed remarkable success throughout the years, performing at Carnegie Hall twice, and with music legends such as Maynard Ferguson and the Count Basie Orchestra. The Big Band also performed at four presidential inaugural celebrations in Washington, D.C., not to mention their numerous concerts here in the Dearborn community, at local events and fundraisers, indoors and outdoors. Rick was thankful to have had a career where he spent every day doing what he loved, surrounded by family and friends who enjoyed every minute with him. He was known to approach all aspects of life in the most optimistic way and was very proud of his family. He looked forward to every chance they had to spend time together. He frequently, his frequent family phone calls and text messages brought joy to all. He was a member of the Dearborn Rotary Club and served as fundraising director and was recently elected president. With his kind heart and bright outlook, Rick truly made this world a better place. His positive attitude, generosity, and sense of humor will be dearly missed and remembered. We have lost a gem in our community. To all, we offer our most sincere condolences.
Thank you, Councilman. A unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, Ms. Clark.
Nothing further from the clerk's office.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the council members? Councilman El-Swafi.
Thank you, Council President. First, I'd like to just acknowledge and appreciate the hard work and efforts of the Dearborn Police and Fire for their quick response over the incident that happened on February, the morning of February 12th. You know, whenever there's a loss of life, it's a tragedy, but it could have been a totally different type of tragedy. And, you know, on that note, we ask our Dearborn Police and Fire to do a job, and it's a tough job, and we require them to be physically and mentally tough. You know, I took the time to tour the Dearborn Police Department, and one thing that surprised me is the condition of the gym there, and it really reminded me, you know, whenever in the military, we're overseas or however far we are, with the limited resources that we might have, we always made sure that we had a good physical fitness center because we know how important it is to our physical and mental health. And, you know, looking at the Dearborn Police Department and their gym, I don't think it's adequate enough. And I know right now it's not the time and we don't have the budget to build a new gym. I know that's not an option, but what is an option is that there is a beautiful gym right across a parking lot that we can offer to our Dearborn Police and Fire. And so what I'm proposing is that we offer a membership that is at no cost to our first responders, our Dearborn Police and Fire, for them to use, and that helps them become and stay physically and mentally tough, and it's actually maybe just a small token of appreciation for their hard work and efforts.
Excellent, thank you, Councilman. Who is here, Mayor, do we have anybody here from recreation regarding that?
So, I...
Can you speak on it? Because, sorry, the councilman had mentioned this to me before earlier on, and I know that we do have, I think, reduction of rates for residents, but, you know, the civic center, but we're talking about the forward-performing arts, is in correlation location, as he made a very good point regarding that. Is there something that we could do, or could we refer this for a memo regarding what would it look like for us to, because I believe he's spot on as far as allowing that use of the membership to use the civic center's facilities for the physical training?
Yeah, so our Parks and Rec Director will begin 28th of this month, so we're scheduled to have Sean Fletcher. As it pertains to membership rates over at the civic center, given that it's only accessible by Dearborn residents or people who work in the city of Dearborn, I don't think there's a discounted rate for Dearborn residents, so just wanted to flag that.
That's right, yeah.
However, as it pertains to offering memberships...
Employees, though.
To employees.
Yeah, they have it.
I do not believe either that employees have access that's been given to them.
Oh, there is.
Is it for free?
No.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, it's discounted.
It is discounted, Mayor, for employees of the city.
Correct.
So, how can we refer this to corporation counsel?
It's half off for city employees.
Right. I think the councilman is looking for, if we do, if we can get some type of memo on what would be the related cost if we offered it for our police and firemen to be able to use it at a no cost to them, so we could see what that would look like for us. Is that something we can refer?
We're happy to produce the memo. The only caveat I will add, and I respect the request of the councilman, I don't want to differentiate always between my public safety employees and my general employees, to provide a benefit to some employees but not all others, because the importance of physical, mental health is something that's important for all. And so that's just the only, you know, feedback that I'd offer. I respect the request, but I also don't want to continually differentiate between what my first responders doing, what all others do. I have DPW drivers who are driving truck, you know, eight, 10, 12 hours a day, and it's a matter of physical and mental fitness as well, but, you know, it wasn't made in the offer to provide them no rate, and so I just wanted, you know, take that back as well, you know.
No, absolutely, Mayor. I think when you, if you could give us a memo, we will definitely look at it. I see where you're coming from, it's, you know, from the big picture, sounds absolutely right, but the DPW department doesn't have a gym inside their facility either, I don't believe.
No other employees do.
So I think that's a concern.
I think fire and police have a gym, but no other category.
Right, right. So I think the councilman along the lines was looking at, Councilman, would you like to speak to it, I think?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think the nature of the job, public police officer and fire is a little bit different than a public works employee, you know, we don't ask a, you know, a driver to chase somebody down, but we do expect that from a police officer. So with the expectation, I think we should provide the right tools, and I don't think it's going to be an extra cost to the city to add a line item to allow a free membership to Dearborn Police and Fire.
Yeah, Mayor, we could, I mean, we'll defer for the administration to get us something that we could look at as a workable aspect. Your comments, I'm sure, are very well taken as far as not differentiation between the two, between the departments, but I think we could also look into what it might cost to upgrade some of the facility that we do have right now with the police and firemen as well. So I'm sure there's some way we can do that, so I appreciate that if Jeremy...
We'll curate a memo and try to get that back through the Chief of Staff.
Thank you. Councilman Hamud.
And if it's possible, can we get both numbers? All employees versus, yeah, I mean, unless...
Of course, I mean, yeah, so what I'll say is, you know, from a numbers standpoint, you know, we'll pull the request to see how many employees currently have memberships, if we're able to make that determination, and then basically say that that's the revenue that'll come off of the facilities, right? Because if you expand it to more, you're just not collecting additional revenues.
Yes, correct.
So you're just giving up the revenues that you currently are collecting. And so we'll run that memo and provide the information based on what we know on utilization as well. I think to date, based on what we know, is we currently have about 10 police officers and 15 firefighters who currently use the facilities, and I'm not sure about general employees. So we'll take a look and provide that memo back to council.
Thanks, Mayor, and then also if you can, just also the current conditions of the current facilities that they have, you know, maybe that would be a better opportunity. I'd like to, you know, the chief or the, they might want them to have it at the location because it's during other times of the work, so that might be another logistical aspect, so maybe there's something as far as what it would cost to get that back up to normal standards. Councilman Parris.
Whereas I do support what my fellow councilman did say about this issue, but going back in time, I know when we first had the gym down on the police department, of course, Jimmy Hubbard was one of our police officers back then and really challenged a lot of people to work out. We ended up purchasing our own equipment back then, back in the day, but even getting to our present-day situation might even suggest, and I'm sure this has been entertained before time and time again, as we go ahead and procure our new equipment for the Performing Arts Center, we do have other equipment that is either going to be sold, or we can go ahead and delegate that equipment elsewhere. As an example, I know that there is some equipment up in the dispatch center as we speak now that was brought over from the Performing Arts Center, and maybe we can go ahead and reallocate some of that equipment as it comes by, because I do totally agree, it's a stress reliever, and it's not only just putting yourself in physically great shape, I mean, look at, look at me, what a specimen I am. But it's great, it's great to have our fire and police, you know, top-notch physical shape to perform their duties, but maybe we can do some other things in the interim before we figure anything else out, too, should that happen here in the future.
All right, thank you.
I'll be sure to take that back. Having walked through the police department's gym as a gym savant, I don't know, would you like to term me? I think the biggest need is probably a cable machine, and so I'll connect with the officers. We'll try to do an assessment as best as we can.
Good, yeah.
The cost of a gym, obviously, just, it comes down to how much you want to invest and to what technology. So we'll do our best to curate a memo...
For sure.
And provide the council with response.
Thank you, Mayor.
No, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman El-Swafi, you want to wrap it up?
Yep, and, you know, I think it's more than just the equipment, I think it's the space, it's a very small space, you know, we want to have the right atmosphere for our police and fire, so they're encouraged to work out. So I think it's more than just maybe getting some more machines in there, I don't think that would be adequate enough, it's just having that whole atmosphere, and we do have that a parking lot away, so just something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, I think it's well taken. So, Councilwoman Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. Moving on to a separate related note, I wanted to thank the police chief and the police officers who hosted me for a ride-along last week, and for residents who, a lot of residents have noticed that we have more police cars on the streets recently, but I experienced that firsthand pretty much all night long, that we have cars out there quietly going up and down the streets, keeping an eye on things and keeping us safe. So thank you to you and all of the police officers. And while I was on the ride-along, there was another incident where the fire department was called, and of course, they were right there within a few minutes dealing with a fire and worked together with the police to keep the public safe on the street as that was being taken care of, so I appreciate seeing the department work together, the departments work together like that. So, thank you chiefs who are here tonight. I also wanted to say thank you to all the department heads who are with us this evening at the city council meeting. The public's aware that we have a number of new department heads, and so this is, I think, what, our fourth meeting since the new year? And so thank you for joining us this evening. I offer, if we haven't had a chance to chat, usually we stick around for a few minutes afterwards, and I love the opportunity to talk with those of you who I have not yet had a chance to talk with, so thank you for being here. I also had a note that I wanted to share regarding the Dearborn Symphony. Their next concert is coming up here at the Performing Arts Center on March 4th, Friday, March 4th, and tickets are available through the box office or online right now, but very special to this particular performance, they are doing Peter and the Wolf, and so it's obviously a family story that a lot of children have heard growing up, but I understand they have a very special narrator this year. So thank you very much to Mayor Hamud for joining with the Dearborn Symphony and narrating Peter and the Wolf a week from Friday. So I encourage everybody to get a ticket and see the live performance of our award-winning symphony narrated by Abdullah Hamud himself. So thank you, Mayor.
I'm the next best thing, next to Morgan Freeman, so...
There you go, your next, your next career.
Councilwoman, we just have to ask you how many hours you rode in the police car because we're keeping a log. I'm so happy that the police chief entertained my request and my members, I'm signed up for this Saturday.
Oh.
So we're going through the rope and having all of us go through this to really see, I mean, like I said in the other past meetings, when you're allocating 46, 47 million dollars to a police department, you know, you should get in the car with them and see what really happens, and I appreciate every member that's already taken up. Some are 12, 18 hours, shifts, I don't know. So I think me and you are probably more in a four to five hour shift, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, she, Councilwoman Burns, I think, is still in the lead because I only did nine hours that evening.
Nine, well, let's still, let's put in pressure.
I think night shift should count for double the points, so...
I agree.
Okay.
It's 1.2.
Puts me at 24 hours.
We're making the rounds, I really appreciate it, Chief Shaheen, because, you know, it takes a different perspective when you, you know, you are in that situation, you see what happens. So I really am glad that we did institute this, and we're going down the line, we're going to get everybody through, so. Anything else from my colleagues? Councilman Parris, then Councilwoman Burns.
Thank you, Council President. I did want to ask, as all of us here and out in the audience and public know about our potholes, and it's a constant complaint, probably...
We have that coming up.
Okay.
Yeah, if you reserve that, we do have, our county commissioner informed me he'd like to speak on that topic right after the council, he's here, and I think he's got a shovel with him, too, so he's going to be up in a minute. Just one minute after you finish.
If I could ask, though, I know, I thought I had heard it, and I may very well be mistaken, but I thought that I had heard that the administration was looking into a dedicated number, you know, for potholes, whether it's, you know, through our phone number or through an email address of some sort. I know for traffic complaints, you know, within the city, it's been encouraged, you know, through our police department to call the complaints directly to the 943-3030, and I'm just wondering if maybe the city does have thoughts about entertaining either an email address and/or a dedicated phone number so people would be able to call in that information. I know we do have a myriad of state, county, city, you know, roadways to take care of, so we would have to differentiate or refer to, but I'm just wondering if that might be an idea that could be entertained.
You beat me to it, so we actually created the email address, potholes@ci dearborn. mi.us.
That's great.
Still a very long tagline, which hopefully will change soon, and so that email will hopefully go live, I think we just established it today, and so we'll have it go live this week. I've already connected with our county commissioner, who I imagine will speak later on today. Anything that is not within our jurisdiction will be forwarded on to Commissioner Baydoun, and he will forward on to appropriate authorities. For those residents who might not be aware, we manage our residential city streets, and then the county and the state roads are managed by the county's Department of Public Works. And so we're going to work together, hopefully, to get through as many potholes as one can possibly get through, but hopefully that email will be announced on social media this week.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be right back. Councilwoman Burns.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to remind everyone that we have a special election coming up on Tuesday, March 1st, and polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. as usual. If you haven't registered yet, you can go into the clerk's office here at the DAC, and Mr. Clerk, I'm sure you'll have some information to share on this as well, so happy to hear from you on this in addition to what I'm sharing, but would really encourage folks to get registered, get an absentee ballot, you can vote in person, there are a variety of ways to participate, and make your voice heard and your vote count at the ballot box on or before Tuesday, March 1st. Again, a special election to fill the remainder of our now mayor, former state representative Hamud's seat for the remainder of this calendar year. So really encourage folks to get out there and vote. If you are still looking for information on the candidates and on the process, you can visit the League of Women Voters' nonpartisan website, which is vote411.org.
Okay, thank you very much for that information. Councilwoman Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to add one more community event that is taking place coming up on March 1st, that's Fat Tuesday, and the, some of our city, our city staff members and city council members in the past have been to the Mardi Gras, that is a fundraiser for the Dearborn Education Foundation. Obviously, the Dearborn Public Schools is a separate entity from, and their board is a separate entity from the board that you see here representing the city council, but we do work in partnership in supporting each other, and the Education Foundation, what its mission is, is to raise funds to pay for things in the classrooms that aren't covered by regular school budget, and it provides additional opportunities for students across the district. So this is, I'm thinking about the 21st year that they've held the Mardi Gras fundraiser on Fat Tuesday. And this year it's being held at Downey Brewing in East Dearborn. And so if you haven't had a chance to visit Downey Brewing and sample their, their beverages that are made here locally, this is a good opportunity to do that and to hear some wonderful Zydeco music and fun music and sample the Cajun cuisine that is prepared specially for this event, topped off by the King's Cake for dessert. So tickets are available in advance through the Dearborn Education Foundation's website, or you can find information on their Facebook page, or you can call over to the school district office and talk to somebody at the Education Foundation there about tickets. So I hope to see everybody there because it's a lot of fun and it's good, a good fundraiser to help our students in the Dearborn Public Schools.
Yes, it is. Thank you so much. Councilwoman El Swafi?
Thank you, Council President. You know, in the last few days over the weekend, I got a few calls from residents. And it was related to the snow emergency and some of the policies. And I think some residents were a little bit confused. If we have somebody that can, Tim Hawkins or whoever can speak a little bit to the policy or maybe the mayor, and I'll tell you, you know, what the confusion was. They see that, okay, there's, they get their streets plowed and then they, they put their street, their cars on the street and then they get a ticket afterwards. So it's a little bit confusing for some residents. If we can just kind of talk about that, you know, what is the policy and procedure behind that, just so residents are aware.
Yeah. Took another one of my talking points for, for open mic time. So thank you for that question. What I'll say is on the snow emergency, as it pertains to the policy and when you're allowed to park back on the street, when we say a snow emergency goes into effect, for example, six PM, it was on Thursday up until six PM on Friday, you cannot park between those twenty-four hours, whether your, your street has been plowed or not. That is technically how the snow emergency works. Now, we do our best to be fair by residents. If we think they got ticketed after their street got plowed, you know, we'll work with our police department to do what we can. But, you know, technically, you're not allowed to park on the street anytime between the snow emergency until the snow emergency actually ends. That is how a snow emergency works. And that gives way because, you know, a plow truck might come through down the middle lane for the emergency pathways, and might come back later on to do the, the full curb push-up. And so that, that's the current policy. If I can add just two more points on the snow emergency, you know, the last snow emergency, we pushed out the siren at six AM. And, you know, we had a lot of residents who, who gave us a, a lot of flack for having it go off so early. But what we heard from the DPW facilities employees was they never saw so many cars removed from the streets. This snow emergency, we sent the sirens out at six PM, given that the snow had fallen that evening. And the feedback from our DPW facilities drivers was that not as many cars were removed off the streets, which made their job a little more difficult, and it didn't clean our streets as well as we would like to. And so I think moving forward, I think this administration is of the mindset that we want the most efficient job done. And so if we do have an evening siren, we might still supplement with a morning siren to inform residents that you still need to get your cars off of the street for the snow emergency.
Councilman Swafi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But how is a snow emergency initially declared that it's the beginning of a snow emergency?
The siren.
Siren. How is it declared that it's ended?
So we do our best through NEXL messaging as well as through social media posts to provide a, a timeline with when the snow emergency ends. If you look to our communications outreach over the last, you know, two, two snow emergencies, this most recent one, we actually provided that very detailed timeline on when a snow emergency goes into effect and when it ends, something that has not been done before. And so communications team has been trying to do his best to job as possible to reach as many residents as possible.
And I think maybe that's where some of the confusion happens. They hear an audible siren, but they don't know exactly, if you're not paying attention, maybe on social media or whatnot, when it ends. And another thing, you know, it's not just one plow that, and the job is done. There's salt trucks that go through, there's maybe a second plow. So that's just something for residents to think about. If maybe one truck goes by, that's not the end of the snow emergency, and that's why it takes maybe a little bit longer.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hamood?
Just one comment on what the mayor said. So I didn't know about NEXL texts until very recently, so maybe I was out of the loop on that one. But they're actually very useful. I think if you guys, I mean, I don't know if the administration is going to choose to do their own texting system, or maybe if NEXL kind of works with you guys or how that works. I mean, that's, you know, maybe something to inform residents a little bit better about. Because I mean, I personally didn't know about it, and I like to think that I kind of know stuff that's going on. But I appreciate that you mentioned that because I was actually going to mention it. So I encourage residents to sign up for the NEXL text because I do believe that the city is able to provide notifications. I know definitely through our emergency response services, and I know that the snow emergencies also are on there. And I think there's, the snow emergency times are on the NEXL text, right?
We do our best to provide a link within a NEXL text message. You have a limited number of characters that you can actually send. And so we usually attach a link either to a social media post or to a press release that provides further detail. Now, NEXL is not used as a two-way communicator. It's only one way, and it's used for emergency situations or usually updates from our emergency responders.
Right. So I would encourage residents to find and follow the official city of Dearborn, Instagram, Facebook. You know, it'd be cool if you had a TikTok or Snapchat, but I know. I'll leave that to communications. So they're shaking their head no. So, all right, that's, that's up to you guys. Thank you.
Okay. I think that might be do it for the council. I did want to just bring one last thing forward. The schools, the Dearborn Public Schools, I did meet with our superintendent, and then was contacted by our, the president of the school board, as well as the chair of a committee that they have. We talked, I talked to Corporation Council as well on this, so I wanted to make this just a public app for, for all our, my colleagues. So there is a school board committee, and they will always place a council person on it. In the past, it was always the council president. I want to make sure that my colleagues get an opportunity to be on that committee because it is vital to the city. It has to do with community relations between the schools and, and the city. So I am under Corporation's Council's review, since I'm the authority of that position and can appoint. I am going to go through, and all my colleagues that are interested, I want them to email me. But since it's public, I want to make sure that everybody knows Councilman Ken Parris will be the first one from the, from the city council to sit on that commission that, for the schools, so we can get a report back from him. And then any of my colleagues that are interested, I'm still going to sit on there, but I want to give my colleagues an opportunity to go through rotation as much as we can throughout this, our term here, and work with the schools on one-on-one and come back as like a subcommittee for, it's actually a subcommittee for Dearborn Schools. And this way we can work as a collaboration together. So Ken, I know that you accepted that, and I wanted to make sure we just make that as a public comment. Councilman Hamood?
Is that a meeting that's open to the public?
Yes. Yeah, it's a school board, it's a school board subcommittee, and they have always placed the council president as the city official to work with them. And I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity. So we're going to start with Mr. Parris. And any of my colleagues, please email me directly that you're interested. And then I will put you on a rotation, and we'll get that going after we give, let Ken give us the first bite to see what happens. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, of course. I appreciate you wanting to serve on that. Anything from, further from the mayor?
Yes, Council President, thank you. Just a few updates. One, firstly, given this is the first public council meeting that's televised, I should say, since the incidents that happened last Saturday. Let me finish my sentence. You know, I really wanted to speak to, you know, what unfolded that day was a tragedy. Obviously, you never celebrate the loss of life, and it's always a tragedy when that outcome is what happens. But I do want to commend our first responders who were on scene prior to any 911 call, even placed a dispatch, given the new deployment model by our police chief. And I do want to commend that. And I do want to recognize that our first responders, our police officers, who were fired at prior to any, you know, any incident, you know, there is a level of trauma that's experienced. And so we do our best to provide them with the physical and mental health supports that they deserve. And not only to our officers and firefighters, but also to their families who are up late at night and wondering if their loved one is coming home. And that's certainly not a call that any mayor ever wants to receive, let alone within your first, you know, six week in office. And so just want to commend the job that they did, the professionalism that they displayed. This last Saturday that just passed, we also had a community forum at Masjid al-Huda, where the arson took place and then subsequent events unfolded. And we had the FBI present. And so I want the community to understand that the FBI is leading the investigation on the arson, given that it occurred at a place of worship, and that because the shooting unfolded in the city of Detroit, that the Michigan State Police alongside the Detroit Police Department are leading that investigation. And we're doing our best to support both. And so as we learn more information, we'll be sure to provide them to the public in a very timely manner. And we've been doing our best to do so. So just wanted to speak to that. Secondly, I wanted the council and the public to know that we are working on submitting a fairly large grant to Wayne County. And it's largely going to be focused on the greening of the city of Dearborn, trying to make some investments in new parks, as well as investments in some of our largest parks all throughout the city in an equitable manner that hopefully brings much-needed and welcomed, you know, remodelments throughout the city. And so we're excited that we're writing that grant. You know, it's like a ten million dollar plus grant proposal. And so our teams have been working around the clock on that. And as we have more information, we'll provide it. And then thirdly, you know, just again, kudos to our DPW facilities team with the snow emergency, and to everybody that came out to the mayor's sledding championship. I saw Councilman Herrick there. Unfortunately, no other council person showed up. So we'll challenge you for next time. But we had about fifty, fifty children from all throughout the city who showed up. And it was pretty fun. We, we tore apart a few tubes. But ultimately, I think it was just, it was just a nice gathering of residents. You know, some folks brought some hot chocolate and some warm tea, and so we thanked them for that as well. But those are the updates that I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I really appreciate that. We now have our county commissioner, Mr. Sam Baydoun, would like to be the first to speak in a public comment regarding our road update.
What?
Road, road update. Road condition update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished city council members, Mr. Gerini. As your Wayne County Commissioner, I have the unpleasant task of talking to you about the potholes. So I just want to give you a quick update. Earlier today, in the Department of Public Services Committee, we had the DPS Deputy Director who gave us an update. The county contracted with two companies, three companies actually, they're going to start on Thursday and Friday, filling a lot of these potholes because the county DPS department is short-staffed. Also earlier today, with Chief of Staff Assad Turfi and Mike Hashem and Musa de Kruw, they alerted me. We drove all the way to Miller, and they were filling some of the potholes. I'm going to tell you, driving on Miller Road is like driving in a war zone.
Oakman, too?
I mean, in Oakman, between Ford Road and Michigan. But honestly, the, the condition on Miller Road is, is totally unacceptable. As you all know, it is on the schedule to be completely redone this year, along with the Miller Bridge. I'm asking the residents to be patient. We are all very frustrated. We all travel these roads. This is a problem that didn't happen overnight. It's been accumulating. We have not invested a lot of money in our roads over the years, and it's catching up with us. So we have to be patient. I will just remind people, you know, to report any potholes by calling the one eight 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 road crew, or the eight 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 seven six two three two seven three. I'm also working-
I've been giving out your cell phone number. That's not working.
Well, it is working, no. It is working. And I'm telling them to call the city council president for the roads in Dearborn. But on a serious note, we're all frustrated. We need to get through this. This happens every year. I'm also working on a town hall meeting with county officials to give more updates and share with the public. I just wanted to come in front of you tonight and just tell you this is what's going on as far as Wayne County. Thank you for your time.
Yes. Mr. Baydoun, Councilwoman Burns has a question for you. But I just wanted to say, I do appreciate, I know we like to kid about it, but I do appreciate your sincerity. I know you've been out and about making sure you are doing everything you can. So we do appreciate in the city of Dearborn. And I know you have other areas to cover, so we do know, we know what you're going through. And we are have, we do have to be patient. As you indicated, Miller Road, we know is slated, so it wouldn't be cost-effective. But I know they're doing whatever they can do for the safety. Councilwoman Burns?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Commissioner Baydoun, for being here tonight. Really appreciate your presence at the meeting, the updates. And I saw that you were out there earlier, so much appreciated. It really means a lot to have someone who's so active in the role, so much appreciated. I know we were talking about Miller and Oakman. Do we have any update on Rotunda? I know I've gotten calls from multiple residents, especially as we lead up towards Schaefer, kind of under the viaduct. That has been kind of like the lunar surface for several years, and I know it hasn't gotten better. Do you have any updates on that? Do we know if that is slated to be done this year or next at this point?
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Adam, my staff is here, I believe this is on the schedule for next year. I know they did Rotunda between Greve Field and Southfield-
Right.
-and they stopped right there. And many residents asked me, why did they just stop right there? Again, it's a funding issue. It's about allocating that amount of money throughout. We have forty-three communities in Wayne County. And I, by the way, I want to applaud the Evans administration and the DPS director and all their staff. They're doing everything they can considering the limited resources that the county has. Just imagine, we have four million people that live in southeast Michigan, a six-lane highway in Wayne County gets the same amount of money as a two-lane highway up north. Mayor Hamood was in Lansing, and, and he knows the unfair distribution of these funds. You know, Public Act 51 maybe needs to be revisited, where you can allocate more money to the most populous area of Michigan, which is Wayne County.
Very good point. Thank you, Commissioner.
Sure. Thank you.
Councilman. Councilman El Swafi, then Councilman Hamood.
I just want to thank you, Commissioner, for, for your hard work. And I want to thank the Wayne County staff for, for their hard work. I know you guys were out there patching those potholes, and I really appreciate that. But on that same note, talking about Miller Road, I know some residents reached out and said that the light on Miller Road in Eagle Pass was taking too long to turn green. We worked through our staff, and we reached out to, to the county, and they went out there and they did whatever they had to do. And it's, you know, they sent us an email saying it's working fine. I went out there myself, and I timed it. It's forty seconds green and then forty seconds red, in line with Dixon Miller down the street. So I just want to thank you and the Wayne County staff for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Hamood?
Yeah, I just want to thank Commissioner Baydoun for coming down here to Dearborn. I know this is your hometown. But also, I appreciate when elected officials come down to the city and come down and address residents publicly about issues that they're facing, and provide transparent updates on, you know, the kind of processes and the things that you guys are doing to kind of allay the concerns. And I also appreciated your comment that you're holding a public forum on potholes.
Yes.
I think that's phenomenal. I think, I think more, we're, we're moving into an era where, you know, people get a lot of information from a lot of different places. And I think it's important that we, as a government, also evolve and become more transparent. And I know that, I know you're a very busy man. You know, you're a man of many hats, as am I, and as are many of members of the council. And, you know, but we're all passionate about public service, and I appreciate that you're going to take time out of, out of your day to, to help residents and people who are your constituents have a place to, to sound off about their concerns, but also, you know, to take that feedback and help you understand better what's going on. And that's something that I definitely want to see more from the city of Dearborn. And I think hopefully we're headed in that direction as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment, Council President?
Of course, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner, for being here. As pertains to road funding formula, the Commissioner is spot on. In Lansing, there's always been a big debate about changing the road funding formula, so that a six-lane highway gets more dollars than a two-lane highway in another part of the state. Unfortunately, largely unsuccessful because you'd be, you know, because of the number of Western and, you know, up north reps that kind of work together to ensure that their roads get, you know, equal funding. And the situation we're asking for equitable funding. Previously, the legislation was also introduced where you provide the dollars based on where the cars are registered, which was a proposal by a Republican member of the legislature that had bipartisan support, but also went nowhere. The last point I'll add is, over the last few years, we have allocated, as I stopped saying we, the legislature allocated far more funding towards roads. Now, here's the difficulty, though. We can allocate dollars today. You don't reap the benefits for four years from now, because you got to go through the planning phase, then the construction phase. It doesn't happen overnight. So even if the state allocated five billion dollars today, by the time you're actually able to deploy that five billion dollars, it won't be for four to six, seven years out. And there's actually a graphic that was produced by the state of Michigan demonstrating this. You can invest as many, as much billions as you want today, but you actually won't see the return for years down, for years down the road. So just wanted to provide that.
Again, I want to thank Mayor Hamood also for establishing a special website for people to file complaints, and then you can screen them, you know, whether it's state highway or county or city. I think this, this will improve the communication. People would be more, you will have more accessibility that way. But I want to thank you again. I took a lot of your time. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Anyone from the audience have anything pertaining to city business, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. And please remind, I just wanted to remind you, you have a three-minute rule. And the clerk will keep the time.
John Benzick, at 2211.
I'm John Benzek at 2211 Academy Avenue. I'm here on item five, which had to do with the amend of the election chapter. I have been the elected precinct delegate of precinct number 46, which was formerly 80, 90, 90, 20 years ago, in the city of Dearborn. And I'm on my 40, 40, 42nd year this year. My only question is, is you want to close down O.L. Smith and some of the other locations to save $30,000 when you're going to turn around in the next two elections, March 1st and March, and May 1st, and spend $167,000, which was ordered by our wonderful Governor Gretchen in Lansing, Michigan? So I don't see the point of the money-saving of this whole situation at all. Personally, myself, you want to go from 50 precincts down to 35 precincts? Is that the goal of this?
Well, we have 48 now, going down from 48 to 43.
Oh, 43, okay. I was given some misinformation, that's why I'm up here right now. I, I can see the point of a consolidation of some of the precincts. I would go along with the program. So I've changed my method of presentation to you right now. I can tell you this right now, as elected precinct delegate, we used to be able to go through the city clerk's office to be, to be registered. And we have to be registered by, by middle of April, and registration starts March 1st. Our congressional district, the 12th congressional district, which stretches from Dearborn to Ypsilanti and Ann Arbor, I had been a part of the congressional district as elected precinct delegate since 1980. I became a delegate and elected and served in the city when John Dingo was our congressman. Of course, he's now deceased. But I'm well aware of the Ann Arbor-Ypsilanti area because I've lived there and, and worked there in the area prior before moving to Dearborn in 1977. Right now, we have not had a congressional district meeting since March of 2019 was our last congressional meeting. So it's been two years that us delegates, elected delegates, have gotten together and had any kind of a sensible meeting. Since that time, a number of delegates have passed away, and COVID-19 has really taken a toll on membership participation. And this is both in case with both the Democratic Party and the Republican Party throughout the state of Michigan. We've both suffered a major casualty in communication problems since COVID has broken out, and many of the senior members now have passed away. I'm a senior member, I'm past 75. The youngsters are coming up, and from what I hear from what they give to me, they want to be a little bit more vocal and participant and factual about some of the information they want to deliver to the future. I think they're doing a, I would, I use the D-word, darn good job. And I really appreciate it. Yes. So I, I will go along with your program, but I would say not to have this resolution voted on until after we get done with the elections for this year 2020, 2022. Now, I have to go down to the city clerk's, no, the county clerk's office and register to be on the ballot. And I have to go down there, and if you change the situation, I have to present a precinct number with identification, and on a valid voter and all the rest of this stuff. This is going to cause a lot of problems. And so, both parties.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Benzek. Councilwoman Herrick?
So I just want to let you know, you're on the right track, but I would suggest that next time you bring this proposal up to the city council, do it in the year 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benzek. Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Benzek. Just regarding the registration of filling out a ballot application to run as a precinct delegate in the August primary election, I know that, I'm not sure if the Dearborn-Dearborn Heights Republican Club is going to be having a similar event, but I know that the Dearborn Democratic Club is going to be having a precinct delegate meeting of some sort to inform any members of the public who are interested in what a precinct delegate does. And that's whether you're a Democrat or Republican, there are similar roles representing your party and your community and your neighborhood. But I know they're going to be having a meeting, and they're going to have somebody on site to be able to help fill out those, those precinct ballot, delegate applications to be on the ballot for August. So if people are interested, I think you can search online for the Democratic or the Republican Clubs of Dearborn and Dearborn Heights to see what they're up to. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Elswafi?
Thank you, Council President. Just to be fair on that point, that it's going to cost over $100,000 to run that special election, my understanding is that we're getting a reimbursement for that funding. Is that right? I think the mayor's-
We don't know if we're going to get that reimbursement or not. We're still waiting from the state to decide if we're going to do it or not.
Okay. I think the mayor's fighting for that for sure, though.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely.
I know he stepped away.
I know he stepped away, but yeah, that was our assumption to it. The governor was here last week, and she stopped by our fire station, and we did have some of those conversations. So as they always tell you, it's not done until it's in the bank. So we will see.
For sure. Thank you so much.
All right. Any other comments from people from the public, matters pertaining to city business, please state your name and address, and kindly render there's a three-minute rule.
Thank you. Edie Mosip, Lansing, Dearborn. So I'm here to speak about the precinct redistricting and closing some of these precincts. So we know that the clerk office published the data about the number of registered voting and precinct, and voter turnout every election. Have the clerk or the city did an analysis to see why the numbers are that way? We know there is disproportionate numbers between the east and the west. Usually, the east turnout is less by 10% to 20% consistently over the 40 years if you compare the data. So one, has the clerk office did an analysis to see why that's happening consistently? Two, have they done an analysis to see what their impact of these closing and moving will do on voter turnout? Because I guess was, learned about it a couple of days ago, about this closing things and moving things around. And honestly, it's concerning, because there is a national discussion and efforts for voter suppression, especially for minorities, and tied to the big lie of last year elections. And we want to make sure this is not done for those reasons. Although, in the past, nobody will come and say, we're doing voting suppression for you, we're closing these because we don't want you to vote. They do it for other reasons, cover up, I guess, like budget cuts, efficiencies, all of that. But honestly, when I saw that my precinct will be closed, I was upset. Because it doesn't make sense for my parents or all the other people to walk across a major road like Greve Field to the civic center, why they've been walking to their school next to their doors? And why move it to the civic center? I don't know. That's, that's something that we, I'm not sure. But I just want to make sure those, there is an analysis that has been done, if that's not have been done, to see why this turnout, the way they, they turn out, and how this closeout will be impacted by these actions.
Thank you, Ms. Moser. Well, let me address some of the concerns for you. Originally, this item was brought forward, and the council, as I indicated earlier, I think you weren't here yet, stopped this item and requested us to, requested an immediate study session, which we did. The study session flushed out some of the consolidations, but Councilman Hamud had pointed out regarding the data, more of it was more, I don't want to speak for the clerk, but to, it wasn't a money-saving aspect, because when I got down to it, we agreed that we weren't going to save hardly any money the first year. But the long vision from the clerk's department and from what he's understanding throughout the state is consolidation into larger facilities. But as Councilman Hamud brought up, I don't want to speak for him, but as he brought up, it's going to create other challenges, where we're going to have people voting at a higher rate than ever. And my conversation with Councilman Elswafi also, some of the precincts in east Dearborn, several of them were closed, where they have very, very high turnout. So that was definitely concerning, such as St. Alphonsus, just for an example for you. But that's the aspect I wanted to touch for you on that. As far as the impact of, of what it would be, what it would do, I don't believe that data has been given to us. I don't think we have data regarding what would be the impact. So I'd like the clerk to address, and then my colleagues. Mr. Clerk?
There's been consolidation of Dearborn precincts since 1963, where we were at our, pretty much our peak. Actually, we were at about 112. I gave this information to the council today, too. And then it went up to 115 briefly in 1980. In 95, we went down to 74. In 2005, we went down to 50. We are currently at 48, and my proposal is 43. So this is not a major change based on what we have seen in years past. And, and each of those times, actually, we have found that in most cases, in most years at least, not in all cases, but in most years, voter participation goes up. Because the idea between, between all of this movement that we're doing is to make it more convenient for people to vote. Are we going to make it more convenient for 100% of people to vote? No, it's not going to happen. But we're looking at the big picture. We're not looking at just Gear Park and, and Henry Ford School, or O.L. Smith. We're looking at the whole city of Dearborn. There are places in Dearborn, you mentioned St. Alphonsus, where there's 2,300 registered voters. There's eight parking spots at St. Alphonsus Hall. It's almost impossible to get in there to vote, even during election time when voting turnout is not the highest. Presidential, forget about it. We were called to go in there and put up more voting booths because there wasn't enough voting booths. We didn't have room to put more voting booths in that area. That's why we're getting rid of St. Alphonsus, to make it easier for people to vote. Do they have to walk maybe two blocks this way, or three blocks that way to get to another location? Yes. But instead of waiting a half an hour and 45 minutes, they'll be in and out in 10 minutes. So it's all about voter convenience. Sometimes it may not be as convenient to get there, but once you get there to the new location, it'll be much easier. And that was the goal of looking at the whole city. I resent the fact that somebody said that I was wasting my time, or I thought it was a waste of time to not have voter input. That was a lie. I never said that. I've never implied that. I've never written that. So we've looked at this since I got here over four years ago, four and a half years I've been studying this, not only as a state representative studying it, but also studying it when I was on the city council. So you add that all together, you're talking about 14 years. Did we put this together haphazardly? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. There was a lot of thought involved.
Thank you, Ms. Moser. Would you-
Yeah, I guess, I don't see it how, if, if the goal is accessibility and voter turnout, how moving, like Gear Park and Henry Ford to the civic center will, will increase that in any imagination? You're increasing the distance, you're moving out of the schools that parents are being, and, and the community are used to go to, to attend their, you know, they're more go-to school than the civic center is moving, you know? So I don't see it as, as a, as a more convenience. I think the schools are wide big enough for anything like this. I mean, the gyms, they use usually the gyms or the cafeteria, which is widely loved. So for, for those two precincts at least, I don't see the reasoning why they're being moved, while there is another precincts at the other side that's very closely to the civic center and didn't get moved to the civic center.
We were also taught, we were also asked to look at people's driving habits. How many have cars? How many don't have cars? How many walk? How many don't walk? We did, we have a study from the Center of Inclusive Democracy out of California that did a map for us and showed us how many people have cars, how many people don't have cars, how many people walk, how many people don't walk. They did the in-depth study. I have it here. And we found that people in the Gear Park area, believe it or not, according, according to their information, they have more cars and more access to vehicles than the people that you were referring to on the other side of the railroad tracks that's closer to, to
I think you have, if you look to the average home price, you would think who, who has the ability to drive compared in Gear Park and Henry Ford compared to the gated communities that we're talking about. Gated communities, they have better ability to move, and, I mean, it's, it's so obvious. So I don't buy your reasons. I know you're, you're trying to sell them. It's not-
I'm not selling it, I'm just telling you what the answer is.
No, no, I appreciate, hang on a second. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. De, Council, I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk. That study, because the Councilwoman Herrick had said she had asked for it, is that something you provided during the study session?
No, I just got it. Because you asked for it at that time.
Yeah, the Councilwoman Herrick asked for, yeah. So this was a study from a California-based?
They're called Center for Inclusive Democracy.
Yeah. No, no, I appreciate, I just think this is another reason why we need more time to, to look at it. So let me see, my colleagues who'd like to speak. Councilman, Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, so I really appreciated Mr. Moser's comments, because several of them were things that I brought up in the study session. And to be clear, I'm, I'm not trying to accuse anyone of overt voter suppression. It's, it's, and I, and I think that our clerk does truly believe in democracy. And I also know the people who are involved in this redistricting process, or, well, re- reprecincting process, they were well-intentioned people. But the, the problem is, when you don't have community input, then, then you end up missing things. And, and while it's nice to look at numbers, I mean, I look at numbers all day long, but even when we, when we go build a vehicle at Ford Motor Company, engineers have their ideal vehicle. It's like, you know, it does not look like anything that anyone would ever actually buy. So the problem is, you have to, you know, there's, there's looking at just numbers, and then there's looking at, how are you going to deliver this with the best result to your customer? And to us, the customers are the residents. So, you know, you have to do what I would call customer clinic, or in this case, some kind of a public forum, where we can sit down and hash this all out and have a conversation. Here we are in, in a city council meeting, when usually we vote on budgetary and legal concepts, and we're discussing this. And, you know, that's why I'm saying, let's, let's take longer with the process. It's okay. Let's, let's hash this all out. Because when I vote on something, when it has to do with voting or democracy specifically, we have the ability to do something better here. We have the ability to improve transparency. There are cities in Wayne County that have translated ballots. And for everyone who's worked inside the Arab-American community with voter access, they know, you know, it's something that we've always struggled, which is trying to make sure that voters, you know, know who they're voting for. Because there's people who are very well-intentioned, and they really want to exercise their right to vote, and they are citizens. And, but they just don't necessarily understand the names of the people on the ballot. And we've kind of, you know, over the last, I mean, I've been involved in advocacy since 2000, or, sorry, well, 2001. So, but so far, we've had, you know, political action committees and nonprofits kind of fill in those holes. I think we have the ability now as a municipality, and, you know, I, and I think that the, we can work with the clerk's office, and I'll be the, you know, I oppose this resolution, but I'll be the first one to reach out and say, let's work together. Let's find a solution. Like, I want to so badly. I just, personally, I haven't heard from the clerk's office very much on this topic, other than the, the few emails we've received. Like, let's, let's all have a community conversation. Let's do this in public, and, and let's do something good. I think we have the, the ability to do that. And, you know, I, I think that it's a very good use of our time and our resources, and it's going to be, it's not going to be easy. It's not. You know, democracy never is. I think that's one of the biggest lessons that we learned over the last couple of years, is democracy is something beautiful, but we have to work so hard at it. So, you know, I really appreciate your comments. I think data is definitely a good way to look at it. I think, especially when it comes to transportation. I, I haven't seen that study.
No, no, he just said he just received it.
Yeah. And I, and I absolutely want that. That's why, today, actually, and I'd like to make sure this is a formal request from council, I'd like the, you know, we brought in an individual who does GIS, geographical information systems analysis. There should be what are called shape files, that I'd like the clerk to share, both the present and the proposed maps.[1699.36] Because I think people who do districting in this room, who, you know, our enthusiasts will call it on that topic, you know, it makes it easier for us to go in and analyze some of the numbers and do overlays, like the one that you see presented actually over there, that's a GIS map. So if council had access to that, you know, we can also engage with voter groups and we would be happy to have you as part of that conversation, or well, happy to have the clerk, I'm addressing the chair, as part of that conversation. Because I think at the end of the day, you know, we're lucky as a municipality that everyone's kind of on board with this. I don't think anyone here is intentionally trying to obstruct Arab-American votes. But we do have to put in the work to make sure that, you know, that doesn't happen on accident and that we all get to a place where we generally agree. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. I also wanted to thank Mr. Moser for, or Dr. Moser for addressing the council. The issues that he brought up regarding possible voter suppression, you know, making sure that our polls are as accessible as possible and making it as easy as possible for people to vote is a priority for all of us. And I, one of the other things that we've talked about was, you know, possible voting drop boxes across the city at some point. And we could talk about that later, but if in the context of looking at the whole picture right now, it does make sense to kind of look at how that, what that would cost and where we might put those right now. I had asked for that data last week and as Council President pointed out, we did have a study session where the public was welcome previously, but every time we have the conversation, a few more questions come up. And they are good questions. So it's unfortunate that it does seem that it's going to slow the process down from us being able to roll it out in the time that the clerk understandably wanted to do it. This is going to cost, they're already going to have to issue voter cards to everybody across the city because of the new districts with the State House districts. And so he was trying to be efficient in not having to issue more than one new voter card in the next 12, 14 months. So that's understandable. I was hoping that in the next few weeks before his deadline at the beginning of April, that we could have a public study session of some sort where the maps are shown and we get public feedback in a quick, in a quick manner. You know, using social media, we can get the word out, we can share the maps ahead of time, we have a public meeting. I don't know if that's possible. I don't know if we have so many questions at this point that we're able to do it before the beginning of April at this point. I was hoping that we would be able to. And I just wanted to thank the clerk for getting the information that he's received regarding transportation to the polls. Because I did ask if we had that, how many of our voters actually walk to the polls nowadays when almost every household has more than one car? And he also reached out to several other cities to see if they had gotten public input when they made changes to their voting locations. And the answer was that, no, they don't. That it's very complex. The clerk and the experts do the analysis and they make the proposal and usually, you know, the city officials agree, the councils say, go ahead and proceed. That's, but we could be at the forefront here, that, you know, as we're talking about voter engagement, it takes longer, but to include the people who are actually going to those polls, to me, is a very important step in the process. So maybe we're the first in the region and we should be proud of that, Mr. Clerk. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Burns?
Thank you, Council President. I think what we're hearing in this conversation during public comment is really a need for more dialogue among not only the elected officials up here tonight who are charged with representing and ultimately making decisions on behalf of and in the best interest of our residents among us, and of course, the people who will be impacted by this, our residents and our voters. So I think I look forward to scheduling a community forum or a town hall with folks across the city. Because folks will be impacted to varying degrees, no matter where they live, but we know that these changes will impact some neighborhoods and some polling locations more than others. And so we need to continue to have this conversation with regard to what we're looking at immediately with potential changes in the next year or two. And I think just a longer-term vision for engagement and inclusive and equitable democracy in our city. And I think we can really lead the way on that and I look forward to seeing that happen. So I'll make space for other folks to talk.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Burns.
St. Hatcham, 4828, Court Street. I think it's very important for us to review the precincts and make sure, you know, we're promoting accessibility and we're promoting participation in the election. I know I had some conversation with Clerk Durani in terms of the location of some of those precincts. And I know I requested that some of those precincts will be at some of the community centers, especially like, you know, since we have some of the voting precincts at some of the churches, we're not having also at some of the mosque and Islamic centers. As you know, people are comfortable if they know the place, if they've been to the place, if they attend the place, they're more tend to go and vote. Especially with some of the Arab-American community, one of the disadvantages for them is basically maybe transportation, maybe, you know, they're not familiar with the process. So if they're familiar with a place, that's something that they go to it on a regular basis, that will motivate them more to go and vote. So this is something I requested before from you and you promised that you're going to look at. Did you look at probably having some of those precincts at some of the Islamic centers?
Well, where the Islamic centers happen to be located unfortunately are really close to the places that we already have, so we really couldn't add any new locations. The feedback that I'm getting, not only from the county but from other clerks, is that most communities are getting away from houses of worship. And the main reason for that is because our Michigan law says that people can open carry in those places. And most churches, synagogues, mosques don't like that factor at all. And so they told us as clerks to, in our training, to maybe back away from those locations because if that law doesn't get changed, it runs counterintuitive to those houses of worships that don't like the fact that people are walking in with guns.
I just believe it's worth looking at since it will really motivate a lot of huge chunk of the community to participate in the election. That's for a second. I know we did translate the sample ballot in Arabic this time, and that's a good step forward. But when, once you have that huge of a community that speaks Arabic, it's a huge disadvantage not having the ballot, the official ballot that they vote on. Is there any law against having a ballot that's Arabic and English, for example?
There's no law against it.
There is no law against it. So why Dearborn, the capital for the Arab-Americans, doesn't have a ballot, official ballot, that's bilingual, English and Arabic? I still don't get this. Are we working toward this too?
We are not working toward that.
Why we're not working toward this?
Our information shows us that 90 to 92% of the people that are of Arab-American descent speak English or understand English. So we made those absentee ballots that you mentioned, the ones that.
Where are we getting those numbers from?
I'll give you the statistic from where, actually, it was sent to me. It was sent to me in, to get me to get.
Do they speak and understand the language? Do they just speak, or do they just speak the language?
They speak or understand English.
So we're going to leave.
It's, I'm sorry if I'm taking time.
There's a difference, yeah.
There is a difference between speaking the language and understanding the language.
I appreciate your comments. This is one of the reasons why we took this off and had a study session and why I supported, as you've seen here on the vote if you came in, the fact that it was four to three, that we delay this until we, when you have this many questions and there's no guarantee that this is going to increase. And I have no doubt that the clerk's intention is to make it more accessible.
Definitely.
But what we have seen before and what we see in practice is now we're seeing a higher voter turnout areas and all those areas are being closed and other areas are not. So we need to see the information and the data and pleased to see that he's getting it. And we're going to get to the bottom of it.
Yeah, I assume delaying this will send the right message to the community that we want their public involvement, we want, you know, we want to hear their opinion. And by the end of the day, the city should promote civic engagement. And voting is the first right we gain when we gain our citizenship. So definitely, we should make sure that people participate in the election and we are making this process easier and more accessible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hatcham. Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, just on the, on the point, we just heard from the clerk, and I don't, you know, I don't mean to go back and forth on this, but I would point out that many elections in Dearborn are decided by far less than 10% of the registered voters. So I'm spitballing here, but I think we have something around 76,000 registered voters in the city. I mean, I won my election by 36 votes. So 10% of 76,000 is 7,600. You know, we, when we're talking about voting, we really cannot just fall back on statistics. If it's a fraction of a percent, that's understandable. But when we look at voting, you know, the number we heard in the study session was only 30% of residents are going to be affected by this change. Only 30 is an enormous number of voters. You know, the entire, I've been analyzing, so I love numbers, I'm sorry, everybody. I've been analyzing voting in the city for quite a while, for the last 20 years, because that's how I did my election, or my campaign. The entire Arab-American voting block used to only be 30% of voters in the city. Today, 54% of, 54% of residents are Arab-American or of Arab-American descent and yet, well, we are only about 43% of the, of people who participate in local elections. You know, we should be striving to increase that number just because, you know, outside looking in, people already assume that Dearborn, like, you know, has a lot of Arab-Americans. And so people do look to us in a lot of ways, like, hey, how are you treating your residents who come from overseas and like, you know, don't speak the language? And they want to look to us as a model of how to do these things. And, you know, that's why I want us to go work on these things. And especially when it comes to language access, we already know that neighboring communities in Wayne County are already implementing these types of things. And that's why I think it's going to be very important that every single resident feels that they have accessible voting. So, like, thank you. I think I'm all.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
This is Adam Moser, 4400 Charles on the school board, as you may all know. So one thing, obviously, many of our precincts in Dearborn are in our schools.
Right.
And I just checked with the superintendent before this meeting just to make sure that, you know, Clerk Durani, we welcome the city to hold elections in our schools, the precincts to be in our schools. I think as the previous speakers, including my brother, mentioned that schools are very accessible to the public, that they have ample amount of parking. And we actually, at the school board level, try to work around voting dates and making sure that there is no school on that day. So there would not be any, a lot of movements. I remember my precinct is also as my brother's. We live in the same block, you know, we're family. But we used to vote, and Councilwoman Hamud used to vote at the same precinct at the city hall. And this is before Gear Park was built.
Right.
Gear Park was built 2004, 2005. And it was a nightmare to vote in that precinct because people were doing their, you know, paying their bills, doing their city business, and at the same time, you're trying to vote. And there was not a lot of parking. So sometimes I would go in the morning and I would not find any parking. I would come in the evening and sometimes, you know, probably 2003 is, 2004 is the only time where I missed voting in a primary. So it's because I forgot to go back in the afternoon and vote. So I would hope that we look at these there, we also look into making sure that we increase the number of precincts. Some precincts, as you mentioned, if they're too busy, then maybe we need to look at nearby centers or nearby schools, which we do welcome, and increase the number of precincts rather than decrease the number of precincts. Now, sometimes it does make sense to move one precinct like St. Alphonse's, maybe it's too busy, not a lot of parking. I do understand that concept. But for Gear Park to be moved, I don't see that at all to be a good move. Because Gear Park has all of the residents around it, they go and vote in that precinct. And it's in and out, two minutes and you're out. And it's a really nice school too, brand new.
It's brand new.
So, air conditioning, the whole nine yards.
Air conditioning.
Right?
We want more of those schools.
Right. So if you go, if you come to the Ford Performing Arts, people are going to the gym, people are doing their things. And as again, people who, it's more accessible. The other thing that I want to mention about the language, obviously, they do speak English. They wouldn't be American citizens if they didn't speak English and pass the citizen test, Clerk Durani. But I do believe that their mother tongue really helps them a lot. City of Hamtramck, because the Bangla language is a minority language, they are obligated to provide ballots in Bangla, in their native language, with English. It would be nice to have it. I know Arabic is not a minority language, unfortunately, because of how Arab-Americans are kind of categorized in the census. But however.
I'm sorry, I lost track of time. You may have.
Okay, but democracy, I'm going to finish this up.
Yeah, of course.
Democracy dies in closed doors, is a famous saying. And democracy really succeeds when you have more people participating in that process. And I would hope that all of you will keep that in mind, that when more people vote, good people get on positions and make better decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Next speaker.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's Law Lee, Dearborn resident. Also want to talk about Agenda Item 5, Ordinance to amend the Elections chapter. I see, Councilwoman, you introduced this for this item, but I do want to talk about two things. One is communications and two, timing. Communications, this is the first, I was honestly surprised when I first saw on the Agenda item. So how is this communicated to the public to see such drastic changes to our election process? How is this communicated considering it was introduced and potentially voted on before it was tabled?
Well, it wasn't voted on.
Potentially voted on had it not been tabled.
Well, yeah, let me address it. So, yeah, so, Mr. Ali, what has happened, I think you came in later, what happened is this item came forward by the clerk and I think, I don't want to speak for the clerk, but everybody's fully aware that the redistricting was challenged, there's legal actions to it and the timeline is very tight. But what happened, it came on the city agenda through the clerk's office and this council, I'm very proud to say, he said, we're not going to hold, you know, pass this through without having a study session, which we immediately called for. And at the study session, we had, as we indicated earlier in the meeting, we had people here from the city that, from the clerk's office, show us the maps. We had a tremendous amount of questions, which some of my colleagues echoed what I had said regarding it, led it to more questioning. So earlier today, we had it to go for first reading and it was voted four to three to not go for first reading so that we can have more time to study. So if you ask when did the residents find out, we found out not even two weeks ago. So it's a short window and I can't speak for the clerk on his timing, but I don't, I do know the timing that has been laid out is very short. So what we did as a council is I don't believe that we are going to rush to any judgment in the precincts, if it makes sense, we have to look at it. For the defense of the clerk, he's indicating there's only changes, what, 48 to 43?
Yeah.
But what's the difference is, is that you're having, you're adding significantly new locations. So that was the question. So at our study session, and let me finish, I had to pull out the sheet and say, what was close and go down to find out that Fortson was going to have a tremendous amount of people there that they never had before.
56%.
Right. And for me, for me, look, and the clerk has done a wonderful job. We had issues with the past clerk and so on and so forth. So I've always supported him in his office and the way he's run it over the years. But the bottom line is, the bottom line is the elections.
I totally understand. I wasn't really looking for a detailed explanation and I wasn't saying anything.
You're asking how, I know, but I thought you were asking how we found out, so I'm trying to explain to you.
The communication. I'm just simply saying, how was it, something as drastic as this not communicated to the public?
Well, we have our, Mayor, would you like to speak on the communication aspect? How was this communicated to the residents?
So if I may, Council President, I mean, this was the clerk's agenda item.
Correct.
That's right.
Yeah, so point being, it wouldn't come from the mayor's office, but.
Well, no, we have a communication department. If the clerk wanted it to go through the mayor's office, through the communications, it would have.
Yeah.
So you're asking, so we're answering for you.
Okay.
So the answer is nothing went through. Nothing was given.
Yeah, but it was also voted four to three for those individuals that voted no, were looking to have this as the passing first reading.
No, the individual that voted no voted to stop it from passing and allowing us to have more time.
He's right. No, the, no, the.
It was a no, yes?
It was a vote, yeah.
Four yes, three no's.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes was to, because it was a motion, I apologize. It was a motion at the table, correct.
Just duly noted. The second thing is timing. Considering, obviously, there's study sessions and whatnot, but what are we projecting to implement? Should there be a change in precinct allocations?
As far as, what were you asking?
Implementing any changes, should there be anything passed?
Well, that's what we're going to talk about. We have to.
Is there any suggestions?
I can answer the question.
I know, but hang on, let him finish the question.
Yeah.
We're getting into a situation where you're telling, you're stopping us. Why don't you make your clear question and we're going to get you an answer. Why don't you make your clear question, and we're going to get you an answer?
So my concern, and I just wanted to make it a point, that there's no implementation of any changes to any of the precincts this year. Dearborn is one of the, has four election dates. A special election with the primary, a special election primary being in March, May for general election, state general, a primary in August, followed by the November election.
Yeah, we're aware of that. It was stated earlier.
Correct. So I want to make sure that none of these study sessions allow an implementation of any changes for this year.
Well, that's up for this body to decide, and that's why we're having a study session.
And as a resident, I want to make it a point that it doesn't happen because it is going to disturb many things.
What you should do, Mr. Ali, is the three council members that didn't think it was necessary to study this more, you can contact them individually. But this body makes the decision. So if you want to ask us about implementation, we have to have the study session in order to decide if we're going to implement it. So if you're asking, "Is it absolutely not going to happen this year?", we can't guarantee that until we have the study session.
But I think you're missing the point on the impact that incorporating any change this year will have on the residents or the potential of voter turnout.
If I missed that point, I would have never voted the way I did. I understand the point. I actually, you weren't here earlier. I actually echoed the sentiments of Councilman Hamud that indicated that in the same election year, we would have people, the same person voting at two different precincts. We're fully aware of what's going on. That's why we stopping it and making sure we have the right information. Does that answer your question?
It was more of a comment than making sure that it doesn't get implemented this year.
Yeah, I think we would welcome your attendance at the study session.
I definitely will.
I know that you come. I know you're active on it.
Please make sure it's well communicated.
Absolutely. We will. That is our job, and we will.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, so to simply answer your question, no, it's not for sure that we won't pass anything this year. That's why we're going to need active engagement from residents. So please, come to any study sessions, say, "We need more time. We want to hear from you." And then that's why I requested the additional information because I think there's some things we need to discuss a little bit more detail. I want to make sure that we get local, you know, pro-democracy organizations, I think that's like the blanket term we use now, on board to ensure that, you know, everybody knows, people who are active in voter engagement specifically, and nonprofits especially, and even political advocacy groups, and both parties are all welcome to attend the study sessions and voice their concerns. These are like the types of things, neighborhood associations. Anyone at all, please, like, come to these sessions. And yeah, and I want to take, I want to take some time because, I mean, it's funny because the mayor brought up, "Why wasn't anybody at the sled thing?" I know personally, I was out looking at maps, making Excel spreadsheets. There are several people in this room who I was meeting with, very panicked because I was worried that this was going to all kind of run by. So I've actually, now, I haven't slept in days. I do have a spreadsheet where I did analyze some of the numbers that we luckily got from the clerk's office on, I think, about Friday. So, you know, there, yes, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. No, it's not for sure that we won't pass anything because the deadline is April 1st. You know, the council members voted four to three in the affirmative to hold off on the first reading this time because I said procedurally, I'd like to make sure, to your point, that we don't pass anything. But there are council members who would like to move forward with the current maps. So that's a political problem for everybody to deal with, yes. And like, as Council President said, please engage with your council members who felt that this was a good map, and please give them the reasons why you feel that it's not. And, you know, that's, it's literally politics, right? So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moode. Just to wrap up on that, too, I know that a lot of comments have been made about Arab-American, not Arab-American ballot, so on and so forth. My concern is not that. My concern is the inequities because we had several closures on east side and major consolidations, which is very concerning to me. And we have smaller, very smaller precincts, like where my mom votes, at St. Kettering, that I thought could easily went to Etzel Ford and didn't. So we just, and my point, this is not, for me, as far as the other aspects about ballots and so on and so forth, is secondary. Right now, we're looking at the inequities of significant closures in one area as opposed to the other areas where, such as the ball, smaller schools, that just didn't make, that made the same rational sense but wasn't implemented. That's why we needed more time. So I want to make sure we keep it focused on that as opposed to other aspects. Samara, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, sure. Samara Lookman, 1247 Ferney. I have one question to start with, and the rest of my questions are just rhetorical. The Center for Inclusive Democracies, you said you received the study today, is that correct?
Yes.
So how did you create the precincts before the study was received?
I was just using that to verify the decisions that we made were accurate.
Okay, so you received the results after you made the precincts, which doesn't make sense.
I made the precincts, and I checked myself, and this checked my work for me.
Reclaiming my time. Okay, so a lot of the questions that were posed by some of the residents, there are some research that was already conducted, and I appreciate that he did try to get research. The Voting Rights Lab in July 2020 did research on consolidating polling places and showed that it suppresses voter turnout even when coupled with increasing absentee voting. Consolidating also increases wait times, longer lines, which causes voter disenfranchisement. I want, you know, I can't conceptualize how a city that has gained 10% in population in 10 years, how consolidating the districts further are going to help alleviate those wait times down the road. Most of the south and east end vote in-person. This is evident by the low number of absentee voter ballots requested and submitted and the high number of in-person turnouts in those areas. When you move the voting locations across major cross streets like Schaefer, Greenfield, some of these other places, then you're creating, I'm sorry?
Michigan Avenue.
You're creating an impediment to those who walk to go vote. And this is supported by data from the Voting Rights Lab as well that shows that transportation issues disproportionately impact minorities when locations are consolidated. And I can give you numbers. In Manatee County, Florida, there was a decrease of up to 7% in voter turnout because of consolidation of districts. Similarly, in North Carolina, a decrease of .7 points as well. To be blunt, voter suppression measures across the U.S. are increasing, and we do not want to add Dearborn to the long list of cities, or Michigan to the states, attempting to subvert the constitution of this great country or who inadvertently create inequities. Why are you changing it in an election year? Did you get public input before this drastic change was made? I understand that you're having study sessions, but, you know, quite frequently in the past, we didn't have public comments at study sessions either. Have you considered equity issues? All these questions that residents posed and that I'm also curious about are valid questions. In response to one of the things that was mentioned about community input not being done in other cities, well, two wrongs don't make a right. The Education Fund, which is a research arm of the Leadership Conference on Civil and Human Rights, the nation's oldest and largest civil and human rights coalition of more than 200 national organizations, says, quote, "In order to reduce these issues, you should require elected officials to seek the input of communities of color when you do these changes." So this is something that...
Sorry, your time has expired.
Well, thank you for timing. I'm the only one that got timed. At any rate, if you were really looking for accessibility, easing accessibility issues, one of the things you could do is include drop boxes, which we have requested across the city. You could also add yes translation to our ballots, maintain as many polling places as possible, robust training of poll workers, educate voters on early voting. And again, these are all things that have been recommended by the Voting Rights Lab in July 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lookman. Any other comments from residents, city pertaining to city business? Please state your name and address for record, and just a kind reminder, you have a three-minute limitation.
Thank you. Bilal Hamud, 48127 Outer Drive. I just want to say that, I don't want to be too dilatory with my comments, but I do want to mention that transparency in this process is going to be fundamental. If we're talking about actually getting out this education to the 30% of impacted voters, it's going to be something that could risk hundreds of voters being disenfranchised. And I'm confident, under the current iteration of these maps, which Council President Surini pointed out, does lead to, you know, inequities and most likely disenfranchisement. That's going to be the case. With a national fight for our democracy, we need to be careful with how these decisions will disproportionately impact the non-traditional communities. When this does occur, there needs to be considerable voting education efforts. So when we're talking about mailing out these voter cards, it's not going to be enough. There needs to be leadership taken on by the clerk with a lot of our pro-democracy organizations in the city to get this education out. And Councilman Burns, I commend you for talking about putting together town halls and forums to make sure that we're getting this education out. Speaking of accessible elections, I commend you, Councilman Hamud, for bringing up the Translated Ballots Initiative, something we've seen done for every election in Wayne County, in the city of Hamtramck, as Mr. Mosse mentioned. And there's no reason why the city of Dearborn can't take on, and can't take that on for non-English-speaking citizens of our city. To Commissioner Hashem and Mr. Mosse's point, even if that statistic of 90% or so percent were true of the fully English speakers that were Arab-American, which I can confidently say, as the former chair of the Language Access Task Force with the Michigan Department of State, it's not. The threshold that would be traditionally used for Federal Voting Rights Act for the translation of ballots is 5%. So that 5% is more than met by the city of Dearborn. In fact, it's met by the city of Dearborn more than any other municipality in our state. So if we're talking about what would be right if the constitution, if the census actually counted our population, that would be the case. We would translate the ballots into Arabic. And I will just say that if we were to do something like that, we've done a study. We've done the research, and in the study that we conducted, the cost to the city would be $4,000 for the translation, the programming of the machines, the printing of the ballots, it's minimal. And it would go a long way historically to protect the voting rights and enable the voting of the non-traditional communities in our city. And you don't have to speak English to be a citizen in this country. So you shouldn't have to speak English to vote. So I really do commend you all for looking into this more, and I'm looking forward to seeing some more transparency in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moode. I appreciate that data, and hopefully you could share that with our executive secretary for the next meeting. That's excellent data, and I'm glad you brought it forward. Next person to speak?
To Mr. Hamud's point, I hope we can find $4,000 for it.
Well, I'm sure we can find it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I had a chance to speak with you guys at your last, the first council meeting, I believe, this year.
Can we have your name, sir? Your name and address, sir, for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dan Featherston, 3645 Roosevelt, 48124.
Thank you.
And I'm here as a director for the Southwestern Outer Drive Neighborhood Association. And I'd like to just start off by reading something. I have some documents, information about our association that if anyone here is interested, they're willing to have. But I'd like to read the one part. There's a lot of misinformation sometimes about neighborhood associations and what they do, what they don't do. Our purpose is to promote our neighborhood in a positive manner, to work to improve our neighborhood and community, address concerns that affect the neighborhood, promote community service, community involvement, have a voice in the community, work with the residents and businesses to improve and enhance the neighborhood. We do not serve as a political organization or endorse candidates. We work with city officials to express concerns of the neighborhood and equality of life. We do not get involved in personal neighbor disputes. We do not allow residents to speak about others at our meetings, in a negative way, that is. And we are registered as a nonprofit corporation in the state of Michigan. We are not governed or controlled by any other groups, and we maintain an individual set of our own bylaws and policy. The main point for me coming tonight is I wanted to, after the things we brought up at the first meeting, we want to thank some of the city administration that's worked with us to help us get information that we needed and also point us in the right direction for the correct places to address some of our concerns. And those people we'd like to specifically name is Police Chief Shehend. He's been very helpful for us. He was also a speaker at our last meeting as a guest speaker. The Building and Safety Director, Tim Hawkins, has worked with us and has been very, very phenomenal in helping. Also, he also lives within our borders and is a member, I believe. Also, his supervisor, Renalt Asano, has been very helpful. Neighborhood liaison, Mary Lonrush, and Fire Chief Joseph Murray. And just wanted, again, to say, these people have been very helpful for us. We actually got a lot of our concerns addressed. Council helped us with that and pointed us in the right direction. We also look forward to positive relationships with the mayor, city councils, city officials, to make our neighborhood and communities a great place to live. So we would like to invite everyone to attend our meetings. Our next meeting will take place on Thursday, March 10th, 7:00 p.m. in the Whitmore Bowles School Auditorium. And our guest speaker will be Mayor Hamud. And we are very pleased to have you come down, sir. And that's basically what I have to say. I wanted to kind of hopefully end things on a positive note.
Yeah, no, definitely. Thank you very much. If you can leave those with our executive secretary, she will pass them out to our members, so.
Absolutely. Thank you again.
And she can also give you, get your contact email so you could send the council your regularly, because other neighborhood associations do send us their calendars regarding when their meetings are.
I will speak to our secretary on that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. And have a blessed day.
Thank you, you, too. Anyone else here to speak on city business, please state forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and Clerk D'Arani. My name is Rick Prusak. I'm a proud Dearborn resident since 1979. I've come to city council numerous times throughout the years to talk about an ongoing situation regarding speeding in our neighborhoods. And I attended the last council meeting before the election, and under the direction of the previous council president, I was told to come again when I can to talk about adding speed bumps on our street. Now, according to our past council president, she indicated that she does have those speed bumps on her street. So I was surprised to see today, in today's Free Press, that Dearborn is cracking down on dangerous driving. And in the article, it states that the police department has a special unit that is cracking down on all the crazy driving that's going on in Dearborn. I call creative driving. And in the article, it said that Dearborn didn't have speed bumps. And it puzzled me because at the last meeting before the election, former council president said she has those on her street.
Okay, sure. Just, I didn't want to interrupt you, but the street that the council president was speaking of is a private road in an area that's not city-controlled. It's not a city road.
Oh, she didn't indicate that. I just...
I'm just letting you know, that's what, there is private roads in the city where you have subdivisions that are privately kept, and they have their own, and that's instituted by their association.
Okay, well, that wasn't indicated to me by her answer to me.
Make sure you understood.
Is there still an opportunity for us to add those speed bumps? Because I live on a street where it's practically Detroit Dragway between two major streets. And I could be in the backyard of my house, or in the back of my house in the kitchen, and I can hear cars roaring off Michigan Avenue or roaring off Colson like it was, you're trying to break the speed limit and become champions of the world. So after the meeting was over, before he was elected as council member, Mr. Paris gave me his business card and told me there is a address to look that up on what I was looking at. I still have it in my wallet. My question to you is, is there any plans in the future to add those kind of speed bumps like Detroit has to curb some of this speeding? Today, I seen three cars on Michigan Avenue go right through burning red traffic signals. And my reply was, "Where's a cop when you need him?" But I know they can't be everywhere. So the reason I'm here is to find out if there's any future talk about adding speed bumps to our city streets, not private gated communities or something like that. Because if Detroit's got them, we certainly need them.
Right. Well, I appreciate the comment. We will, we are coming up in our budget session, coming up here next month. And we do have, as you're aware, our residents voted to reduce their mileage rate, tax rate. So we're going to be addressing a lot of these issues during that time. But I can tell you, and you might have heard with our police chief, that deployment and our tutelage of our mayor has changed the whole dynamic of how the deployment of officers are in the streets. We have had many residents, I'm not sure if you've noticed, several more police cars in our neighborhood areas. So the police chief is back there. I'm not sure if you've talked to him in the past, but after the meeting, we'll be able to get a communication with you and to see where you're at to see if they can heighten the presence in your area as well for the times where you see the speeding the most.
And I also want to commend the fact that since the last snowfall, I've seen two Scott cars on my street going in different directions, ticketing everybody. I haven't seen that in almost 20 years or more that I lived on my street. When I saw the first cop come to me in my direction, I put down my snow shovel and I was clapping, giving him the high sign, and he said, "So far today, we've ticketed 85 cars." I says, "Well, I hope they're all in my area because even on public service days, on nice days, there's four, five, six, seven cars on my block alone that stay in the street."
Right.
Whether it's, you know, snow removal time or public service days. So I am thankful that at least, you know, some people...
We're moving in the right direction.
If you hit them in a pocketbook, you get their attention. So I appreciate the fact that there's more police cars giving out tickets. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I will take it. Anyone else from the public, like to speak to the council surrounding city business? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record. If there's none, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion adjourned by Councilman Harry.